I'm Anne Pernick. I'm with Safe Cities and the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty at Stand@Earth. And I am wanting to thank everybody so much for coming today. Appreciate your being here. And as I welcome you to this community forum about actions the New York City Council can take on fossil fuels, I want to give you an opportunity to introduce yourselves in the chat if you're comfortable doing that, or even better, turn on your video so people can see you. And as you introduce yourself in the chat, we welcome your doing that, saying what neighborhood you're in, saying hello if you know some of the other people here. And I want to introduce our speakers. And I'm going to introduce them in the order they're going to speak, and then I'm going to talk a little bit more about logistics and how we all came together today, and then let them begin their presentations. So we have Annie Carfaro, who's the Climate Justice Organizer with We Act for Environmental Justice. We have Pete Sikora, the Climate and Inequality Campaigns Director with New York Communities for Change. We have Anna Catholala, co-director with Fridays for Future NYC. And we have Todd Fernandez, founder and executive director with Climate Crisis Policy. And I want to thank you all so much for your work and being willing to speak with the group today. And just a few logistics to kick us off. I am recording this meeting today so that I can share it out with people, everyone who's here now, other people who RSVP'd and other people who might be interested later. And I'll send the link to the recording and any other resources that come up to everybody who RSVP just a little bit later this week. This forum will include presentations and Q and A and discussion. And so just a little bit to kick off the content, a little bit on why we're all here. So again, I am with Stand@Earth. And at Safe Cities at Stand@Earth, we work with advocates and community leaders and local governments to pass policies, local policies, that stop fossil fuel infrastructure expansion and phase out fossil fuels. And Safe Cities policies include a number of different things that local governments often have the power to do, including building electrification, moving off gas for electricity in homes. I'm sorry, moving off gas for power sources for space and water heating and cooking in homes. They can also include endorsing actions that higher levels of government will need to take, like signing a fossil fuel nonproliferation treaty to call for international action to phase out fossil fuels. More on the treaty in just a bit. But I want to note that the combination of taking substantive local action, as New York has done and can do more of, to limit fossil fuel expansion and phase out fossil fuels is really showing leadership of the kind and the scale that is needed. So we are coming together to talk about how to urge the New York City Council to take more action, both policies that are very much on the ground in the city and also joining the movement calling for international action on fossil fuels. And many of you are here because you took one of two online actions that we created to give everyone the opportunity to have their voice heard. We have both a petition that is specifically about asking the council to endorse the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty. And we also have an action that's an email to Target, which sends emails to the whole city council asking for an endorsement of the Fossil Fuel Treaty, passing the ban on new gas hookups, and protecting Local Law 97. So a lot of people who RSVP today had done at least one of those two actions. Over 260 people have so far taken those actions. And I'll send, or I'll share the links in the chat in just a little bit so that if you haven't had a chance to take those actions yet, or you want to share them with other people, you'll have them. And again, now I'm going to open it up and let our speakers start talking, starting with Annie Carfaro, who again is the Climate Justice Organizer with We Act for Environmental Justice. And I'll let Annie take it away.
Great. Thank you so much, Anne. So I'm going to be talking today about a bill we are working on with NYCC called Gas Free NYC. But first, I want to share a little bit about We Act. So We Act is a 33-year-old environmental justice organization founded in West Harlem in northern Manhattan. And our goal is to build healthy communities. And we do that by ensuring that people of color and low-income residents are able to participate meaningfully in the creation of environmental health protection and protection policies and practices. So we organize and advocate for policies that will further climate justice in northern Manhattan. And the fight for climate justice is the fight to ensure that everybody, regardless of race or income, can live, work, and play in a healthy environment. So climate justice does not ignore it, but challenges the political and economic injustices of our society. At this point, it's well documented that communities of color are hit first and worst by extreme weather events caused by climate change, and this is not by accident. This is due to decades of inequitable exposure to pollution and environmental hazards, along with steady disinvestment, racist housing policies, racist economic policies that have led to huge disparities in health, well-being, and preparedness for our changing climate within communities of color. So We Act, we organize to increase environmental health and climate resiliency through participatory research and evidence-based campaigns. And we engage members in decision-making on key issues that impact their health and their communities. Just a couple of our campaigns, we organize with NHTRA residents to advocate on behalf of community improvements to public housing and ensure that environmental challenges like mold, lead, pests, repairs, and other basic issues are met, and that they have a voice in how that happens. We organize residents in northern Manhattan to prepare for extreme heat. As we saw this summer, and we've seen every summer for quite a while now, heat waves are getting hotter and deadlier. And we need to make sure that cooling assistance is accessible and affordable for everybody. Extreme heat is a really clear example of environmental injustice. We see in New York City, 50% of heat-related deaths are among black people, even though they make up only 25% of our city's population. And then in 2016, We Act started a worker training program to create jobs for unemployed and underemployed members of the community, doing solar installations on top of affordable housing. Now known as SUNS, Solar Uptown Now Services. It's the first successful solar cooperative specifically for multifamily affordable housing. So we're organizing multiple campaigns. We're bringing much-needed dollars into low-income communities to make sure that renewable energy projects, energy efficiency, sustainability measures, and funding for electrification make it into our neighborhoods first because, given the toll that climate change has already taken, it's really important that we are meeting the needs of environmental justice communities. So yeah, this is like kind of all a part of our vision of a just transition. The transition is referring to shifting from an economy run on fossil fuels, which are causing climate change, to one that's powered by renewable energy. And to make this transition just, we need to ensure that communities of color are not left behind and ensure that people who are hit hardest by the climate crisis are sharing in the economic opportunities that will be created by closing down fossil fuels and building renewable energy and developing the infrastructure needed to support that. So I'm going to move on to talking about Gas Free NYC. And this is also known as INTRO 2317, is a bill that is in city council that would, if passed, tighten air pollution limits on all new construction and gut renovations, effectively ending gas and oil use in buildings. So this is a big deal. Instead of relying on fossil fuel infrastructure, new buildings would be built in an energy-efficient manner and would rely on heat pumps for heating, cooling, and hot water. If passed, INTRO 2317 would avoid the lock-in of decades of future pollution from thousands of new buildings and gut renovations. The bill would prevent millions of metric tons of air pollution from heating the climate. And we know that this is the right and necessary move for the times that we're in. The IPCC Six Assessment Report released in August made it clear that there must be immediate, rapid, and large-scale reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. And the International Energy Agency recently urged the worldwide adoption of laws that would end the sales of new gas boilers and furnaces for buildings because such action is necessary to avoid worldwide catastrophe. So while yes, this policy is bold in terms of precedent, it is by no means something we can afford not to do. INTRO 2317 has a lot of benefits. It will create thousands of new jobs by increasing the need for advanced energy efficiency and heat pump technology. It will catalyze the construction industry's shift towards clean energy jobs and further position New York City as a leader in the rapidly growing clean building industry. It's also economically feasible. The city's government's pathways to carbon-neutral NYC study shows that electrification requirements are cost-effective. NYSERTA's Building of Excellence programs show that the cost of electrified buildings is only 2% different from gas-fired buildings, and the costs keep going down as technology improves. So why do we care about this as an environmental justice issue? In New York City, buildings are responsible for 70% of greenhouse gas emissions, and air pollution is deadly. Over 1,000 New Yorkers are killed each year from the combustion of fossil fuels in New York City buildings. And a recent study found that in New York City metropolitan area, communities of color are actually disproportionately exposed to dangerous particulate emissions associated with residential gas combustion. So communities of color are exposed on average to 17% more particulate matter than population averages. And black New Yorkers specifically face 32% higher exposure. And I want to point out, this is clean-cut environmental racism. The fact that the color of your skin determines the amount of pollution you're exposed to. So ending gas use in new construction would avoid large increases in air pollution each year. It would reduce mortality and other health effects, such as respiratory illnesses like asthma. And it would shift our economy to a green economy a lot faster. So we already have a ton of momentum on this bill, but we need to get it to the finish line before January, when our sponsor, along with two-thirds of city councils, turn over and we receive a new mayor. So yeah, we need a lot of public support. I'm going to drop some links in the chat, but you can look up the bill and see if your council member signed on. And if they're not, we urge you to call their office and tell them they need to support INTRO 2317. If they are signed on, that's great, but we can still pressure them. And we can call anyway. We can urge them to push Corey Johnson, who is Speaker of the Council, to bring this bill for a vote. Or you can call Corey yourself if your council member's already signed on. I think we really need, as we come down to the final months, we really need to take action. We need to show that there is a groundswell of support for Gas Free NYC. So I'll drop some of those links in the chat that will help you look up your council member and if they're on the bill or not.
Great. Thank you so much, Annie. And we'll have time for Q and A and discussion in just a little bit as everyone finishes their presentations. And so next, we are going to have Pete Sikora from New York Communities for Change.
Hey, everybody. We are fired up to shove through this gas ban on new construction and gut renovations with We Act. It should be really a big deal if we win this year. That would be really cool. So you know, it's like a real live fight in the council right now. So you know, your help in that is extremely useful. We're very much on the cusp politically of this thing either passing or not passing this year. So I did want to give that plug because we get down with We Act on it and a bunch of other groups. So thank you, Stan, for your help on that. And so many of you on this call who are New York City types will be familiar with the basic stat here that really is scary, which is that 70% of the city's climate heating pollution is coming from buildings. More than half of that is coming from just the largest buildings. 2% of the real estate or 5% of the buildings that are over 25,000 square feet. These are larger buildings. And they are the dirtiest buildings. They're producing over half of that 70% or about 35% in raw terms of the city's pollution. So cleaning those buildings up is an incredible opportunity to A, cut pollution, but B, create good jobs, particularly good union jobs in design and renovation and construction to overhaul those buildings to high energy efficiency standards. And that's what Local Law 97 of 2019 basically requires over the coming years. It is really an incredibly far-reaching piece of legislation that a lot of us got through the council after years of work pushing and fighting with the real estate industry and with the politicians to get something like this passed. The law is the first of its kind in the nation to set specific limits, enforceable limits backed up by penalties on climate pollution from buildings. That, by the way, should kind of freak you out because if New York is the first, and right now, there's only three cities in the country that have actually set limits on climate heating pollution, but the top source of pollution from cities is buildings? Big alarm bell there, right? Because that means there's a lot of work that needs to be done in the rest of the country to overcome the developer lobby in each area so that restrictions can be put in place that make sense on buildings to slash their pollution. And so in New York City, we have those restrictions in place now. But guess what? The real estate industry is not giving up on trying to crush this law. They went down fighting. And you know, it was like the Star Wars movie, the first one, or at least what I'm used to as the first one. Like, we nailed the Death Star, and now it's Empire Strikes Back time. Because what they're going to try to do is defang the law through the administration and try to convince the incoming mayor, Eric Adams, to gut the law on the administrative side by dogging the enforcement. So what we want is for the new mayor to continue on the track that the city is on right now. The de Blasio administration, man, we can't stand them on so many, so many issues. But on this one, they're actually very good. They are fully implementing Local Law 97, moving forward on it in a very good and reasonable and thorough way. The big fear now is that the incoming mayor may change that track. So he has been asked by press about this issue, and his spokespeople said some disturbing equivocating stuff where they recited some talking points from the Real Estate Board of New York, which is like the 800-pound gorilla of lobbying in New York City. They hate this law and they want to gut it. So it's concerning that the spokesperson for the incoming mayor, you know, made those kinds of comments. That said, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot to do before he takes office. And I don't get the sense that they've made any kind of real decisions on their transition. So in the new year, in the new council, we expect that there's going to be, you know, something of a confrontation here between, you know, the people who fight against the dark side and the real estate industry, which will try and gut the law. So that's what I'll say. And, you know, we really appreciate Stan setting the stage for helping to fight that fight so that we can make sure that Local Law 97 is fully enforced and large buildings, the top source of the city's pollution, are forced to slash their pollution, thereby creating a lot of jobs in energy efficiency upgrades, which employ people from low-income and middle-income communities of color throughout the city. And to give you a sense of the scale of the law, and I'll close there. The economic analysis of this law is that it will lead to tens of thousands of jobs this decade. There's been a lot of hype on green jobs in the past, hasn't come through. This law right now is already starting to create those jobs in design, renovation, and construction. The first requirements hit in 2024, and then they tighten a lot in 2030. Over the next decade, will create tens of thousands of jobs to slash pollution from large buildings by improving their energy efficiency. And so we look forward to defending law and getting it fully implemented. And, you know, if you have questions, we'll take them later.
Okay, great. Thank you, Pete. And we're going to talk, the last policy we're going to talk about is the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty. And I'm going to kick off that part, and then I'll be followed by Anna and Todd. So in short, the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty is a global initiative to phase out fossil fuels and support a just transition. And it is ultimately something that will be acted on at the level of nations. But the support for it, the call for it, needs to come from lots of different places, from individuals and organizations and communities. And in New York City, a resolution to endorse the treaty has actually already been introduced. It was introduced about a year ago by retired council member Konstantinides. And it was introduced into the Committee on the Environment, and it's still there. And we would really like to keep it moving. We at Stand@Earth, the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty, and some other organizations that are starting to work with us. So again, it is not something that New York City cannot, you know, sign on as a party to a global treaty, but to hear from New York City that the people of New York endorse this call is very powerful. And about 14 cities around the world have endorsed it so far. And that includes Los Angeles and Vancouver, B.C., and also Toronto. And some small cities in the U.S. have endorsed it, and some large and small cities outside the U.S. But New York has not, and it just seems like a natural fit for the city, given the city's history on fossil fuels and hopefully more leadership coming on new policies, and also history of speaking out around wanting a nuclear-free world as well in decades prior. So experience in the city in calling for action on something at the international level that was crucial to people on the planet. So there's a lot to get excited about the treaty. There are 100 Nobel Prize winners who have joined the call for the treaty, including the Dalai Lama. There's support from academics and from organizations, large and small. And I'll share some links so that you can take a look at that. But we're hoping that along with this critical action to defend Local Law 97 and to pass a ban on new gas hookups, that New York City will also join the call for international action. And welcome. I just saw you pop in, and thank you so much for showing your video too. We welcome you. And so I wanted to give Anna and then Todd a chance to talk about their organizations and why their organizations have endorsed the treaty and why they think it's important for New York City to pass this resolution. And so I'll pass it to Anna, and then we'll go to Todd.
Yeah, thank you so much, Anne. So hi, my name's Anna. I'm a junior in high school in Manhattan, and I'm also a coordinator with Fridays for Future New York City, which is sort of the local New York City chapter of the global Fridays for Future movement. And just a little bit of background as to why we endorsed the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty. I think that like the youth of New York City are tired of fake promises from leadership and like, you know, pledges that are getting us nowhere and pledges that are, even if they sound good, aren't really being actualized into action that would, you know, allow global temperature rise to be below 1.5 degrees Celsius and to keep us safe from the adverse effects of global warming, which we're obviously already feeling. And I mean, I think the youth are scared and worried about their future. I was talking to someone who's in my grandparents' generation the other day, and I was expressing my, you know, my fears for the climate. And they said, you know, "Oh, I'm so glad that I'm old and like, I won't have to see this." And that just made me really sad because like, you know, I will have to see it, and we will all suffer through it, my generation, the generations that come after me, and even my parents' generation. And we're even suffering through it right now. And people who live in New York City will be especially affected, given that it's a coastal city. That floods are already happening, deaths because of floods are happening. We lost so many lives to Hurricane Ida, and that was completely preventable. So obviously, the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty is a really crucial piece of legislation that would really change things for the world if it's adopted by enough countries. And I think New York City being such a, being such a city that the world looks at and really pays attention to and whose leadership is really respected, I think that having New York City endorse it would make a real ripple effect across the world. So Fridays for Future is striking every Friday. Right now, we're actually striking in front of the U.N. with a couple different demands surrounding COP26. But after COP, we're going to move to City Hall, and our main demand will be that the New York City City Council endorses the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty. So we are sending out the petition that Anne and the rest of the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty team has put together. We're asking as many people who come to our strikes and as many people who follow us on social media and are connected with us to sign it. And then we're also later in this year going to try to set up some lobbying meetings with different city council members within each of our districts to ask them to push the treaty along. And then we also see this as a real opportunity with the new incoming mayor to really, you know, push him to listen to us and to take our ideas into consideration. Obviously, the incoming mayor is not a climate steward. He cares, he seems to not care very much for the environment and definitely does not prioritize climate on his agenda. But we're hoping to get a good momentum and good campaign going before he's presumably elected and inaugurated to really get him to listen to us, to the youth and to the youth allies and climate justice activists in the city and to really take action on this. And hopefully, that would mean that he would try to influence the city council members to endorse the treaty. So that's a little bit about what FFF is doing and why we support the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty. And yeah, I'm happy to take questions later, but I think that's it.
Great. Thank you so much, Anna. And then we'll go to Todd. And then we'll just have a couple of quick notes on next steps because I think we're going to want to share a lot about those in the chat. And then we'll be able to open it to any questions or comments from other people who are here. Take it away, Todd.
Thank you so much, Anne and everyone. Again, my name's Todd Fernandez. I'm with Climate Crisis Policy. And we're a national network of grassroots leaders in about 100 congressional districts in 28 states, focused pretty exclusively on passing federal legislation. And my personal ambition in this is to really advance the movement to the point that we have enough power to ban greenhouse gases, ban fossil fuels, to really cut through all these interim measures and get to these ultimate solutions because the time has run out. So I'm excited about the treaty. Very excited about the treaty. When I first came to the movement in 2014, it was the People's March in New York. And I asked them, "What's the demand of this movement?" And I had come from the LGBT movement, and they said, "Keep it in the ground." I said, "All right, that's interesting. What does that mean in legislation?" I was a legislative director for many years. And I had just come from working to get the Equality Act filed in Congress. And so fast forward a little bit, we got the Off Fossil Fuels Act, was a really good bill. And we organized around that for a while until it wasn't refiled. Then we analyzed over 150 expert reports, bills, and laws from every source you could imagine to figure out what the essence was, what the common ground was for the environmental movement across a range of topics and greenhouse gas sources. And this past year, we were waiting for all these great bills to be filed in Congress to ban greenhouse gas pollution and to mandate that the utilities go 100% renewable electricity, to mandate 100% zero-emission vehicles. And none of those bills materialized. So we are working on now something called the Earth Bill. And we're talking to sponsors about filing it now, and it would do those kinds of things. Put mandates in law to require the industry make these transitions away from fossil fuel products to renewable projects. So that's going pretty well, but there's a long road to go there, as you know. And in addition to this lately, through U.S. Climate Action Network, which we're part of, we started studying the U.N. Framework Convention on Climate Change and the Paris Accord. And even though I have a Masters of Law on Human Rights, International Human Rights, I have to admit, I didn't read these documents until recently, and I'm ashamed to admit that. But as a lawyer, when you read documents like this, what you would call them is illusory promises. Illusory, meaning that they're not enforceable promises. There's no real commitments in these documents. And recently, just this month, the NDC synthesis report, which is a report that the United Nations puts out to ascertain what these nationally determined contributions, these voluntary pledges would do if they were implemented, said that the current pledges would result in a 16% increase in greenhouse gases by 2030 and a 2.7 degree Celsius global warming by 2100. And that's if even these pledges were achieved, and we know how unlikely that is. So my assessment at this point is that Paris is not working. It wasn't crafted to work. And there are other approaches that do work in this arena to outlaw atmospheric pollution. And those need to be considered in the Fossil Fuel Treaty as an approach to do exactly that. Professor Scott Barrow from Columbia University's Earth Institute has called for documents similar to the Montreal Protocol or the Cugali Amendment dealing with hydrofluorocarbons as effective agreements to reduce those that have enforcement provisions related to international trade among the nations on these types of things. So this is the kind of idea that I think is necessary and that we need to pivot to going into COP26 to look at something that has not worked for over 26 years and still hang our hat on that as the only solution, as the only plan. We only have this Plan A, the Paris Plan, in motion. We don't have Plan B, C, and D. And we're talking about the future of our planet, and we can already see that Plan A has not worked and is not working. And there's nothing on the agenda to change the process or the obligations or the enforcement of any of that. So this is like following a pipe dream off a cliff, in my opinion, the closer I've looked at it. So this is like following a pipe dream off a cliff, in my opinion, the closer I've looked at it. So city council resolutions are a great way to get started with these kinds of things, even with federal legislation. We did them for the LGBT Equality Act. We did them in the immigration context. We did them. My first one was the City Council Resolution for Domestic Partner Registration for Gay Couples in the nineties in Boston. And now we have marriage equality, by one vote, in the Supreme Court. So city council resolutions and that journey of building the grassroots support at that level and then using that to name and shame and pressure the international effort can be a very effective way. So I just urge us all to get involved in this. It's critical to saving the planet, and unfortunately, this is our best place to start for something like that, is at the city level with the New York City Council. So as we go into COP twenty-six, I just encourage everyone to lift up the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty. I wrote La Delto See today, and that's the Global Climate Catholic Movement. And they had a rubinar on the treaty recently, and I was excited to see that the Pope is lifting that up. But we need everyone to start mentioning this going into COP. We need to take over the narrative. We need to say that Paris is not working. Maybe a vote of no confidence in the United Nations generally at this stage to try to shake things up. But whatever we do, we cannot continue down this path that is obviously not going to be successful without at least adding Plan B, C, and D. So with that, I'll end, and I'm just excited that we're working on this together. And I want to acknowledge Nidya Lee from the Granny Peace Brigade, who has inspired me in all the work that I do, and her presence here inspires me to know that we're on the right path here again. Thank you.